The James City County Planning Commission Regular Meeting of 5/6/2021. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rogers.
Present.
Mr. Rogers represents the Berkeley District. Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Rose represents the Roberts District and is Vice Chair to the Commission. Mr. Haldeman.
Here.
Mr. Haldeman is an at-large member. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member as well. Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District. Mr. Polster.
Here.
Mr. Polster represents the Jamestown District and is Chair of the Commission. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county. It's my pleasure to serve as Secretary. Sitting to my left this evening is Ms. Liz Parman, our Deputy County Attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Our first item on our agenda is a public comment. These topics are not subject to a public hearing. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have any speaker cards for the open public comment? Okay, I will close the public comment. Reports of the Commission. Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, sir. The 21 June DRC meeting came to order at approximately 4:00 PM. At that meeting was myself, Steve Rogers, Chair, Barbara Knoll, Rob Rose, Frank Polster, and for the staff, we had Josh Crump, John Reisinger, Tess Lynch. There was no old business for discussion at that particular meeting, and we had one piece of new business. That was C. Tac 23, Tac 0032, Kingsmill Master Plan Conceptual Plan. The DRC met to discuss the Master Plan Conceptual Plan, which had been submitted by Mr. Jason Grimes of AES Consulting on behalf of Escalante Kingsmill Development LLC and Escalante Kingsmill Resort LLC. Their conceptual plans show several residential and recreational developments throughout the Kingsmill area. The affected areas within Kingsmill consist of property zoned R4 Residential Planned Community, M1 Limited Business Industrial Designated Low Density Residential, and Limited Industry on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. All the areas we discussed are contained inside the primary service area. The Kingsmill Master Plan application is currently under review by agency and county staff to assess its compliance with the county code and other regulations, but the applicant had requested that this particular item be placed on the DRC agenda as part of the initial review process to seek input and to take questions from DRC members. We express concerns about things we felt would affect not only the Kingsmill residents, but the area being developed as well. These include possible encroachment of development into the Resource Protection Area, and we questioned whether lots might be placed in a way to preserve wildlife located at or near areas upon which there are steep slopes. Also discussed whether or not the suggested buffers will adequately mitigate the noise level from the new development, but also from the existing brewery complex and the adjoining amusement park. We further discussed traffic flow in and out of the development, the two entrances and exits, whether any of the Escalante proposals might require existing land uses to be rezoned. As this was a discussion item only, there was no action, and there were no votes taken. We were honored to have many Kingsmill residents with us who came to hear the discussion, and as we were willing to allow public comment, several of those citizens voiced questions and concerns about the proposal, and many of their concerns and questions echoed the very same questions that we had as DRC members. After that, Mr. Polster made a motion to adjourn, and on a voice vote, the meeting adjourned at 5:28 PM. Subject to any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item that we have is our consent agenda, and consent agenda items are deemed to be non-controversial. Does anybody wish to pull an agenda item?
Move to approve.
I'm going to pull SPL N22-001 and 003. Given that I'm pulling those, can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
What should I approve?
We'll take a voice vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Mr. Weisong, could you approach the... I think my first question is that one, besides Track S and 11, recently we've also had 5 and 10. When you add up the number of residential units that we're talking about, is it somewhere on the other side of 1,000?
I believe it's above 1,000. Yes, sir. I don't have the exact number, but I could get that to you.
The reason I pulled this was, not that I have a problem with the two items, but I think what's instructive, at least for me, is that when you go back and you look at the track record of the 219 when we did a reduction for, and then we had the Hazelwood Farm piece, there was a real interest in the traffic issues associated with the Old Stage Road and the roads going into that. And so, if you got a chance to take a look at your email, could you tell us the number of roads that were in the proffers that have now triggered a signal and where they're located at, please?
Certainly. Let me pull up my list here. So, as you had said, there are multiple transportation proffers that have been put in place with different trigger points for residential units. The transportation improvements for the state Route 30 and Fieldstone Parkway, there's a signal that's required there that's been triggered. The SGR has been done for that. The study that's required for Route 30 and for the I-64 westbound off-ramps, on-ramps, the study's been triggered for that. The state Route 30 and Lagrange Parkway intersection, the study that's required for that, that's been submitted as well. And last, but not least, the improvements to the portion of Mount Laurel Road that has to be looked at as part of this plan review, that's also occurred. So, we've been diligently applying the proffers as part of the Stonehouse Plan Review.
One of the other proffers that I recall was for 85 workforce housing, and how many of those proffers as of 2022 have been completed for workforce housing?
Seventy of those proffered units have been constructed within Track 3, so there are 15 remaining as of that date.
I bring that up just because I think it's rather remarkable about how the staff manages to keep track of these things, and it also gets to the point that when we take a look at some of the traffic problems up at the upper county, the cumulative impacts and then the other proffers that come into it. And so, we know that there's going to be the growth up at that end of it. Not so much for Mr. Weisong, but as we went through the 2045 comp plan, if you recall, the intersection with Old Stage Road and Rochambeau where the Stonehouse Elementary School is and the academy that's there is already a problem with traffic, and the population coming into that end, 1,000 other families that we're going to have plus in there, it's already red. And so, I hope that as we go down the road and we take a look at that, that just like Mr. Holt has managed, hopefully, to solve the Airport Road and Moretown Road intersection for, is that at some point the county will see fit to put money aside. I mean, a stoplight is about a half a million dollars, and of course, the penny and a half that we're putting away from that last sales tax to be able to take care of matching funds. So, I hope at some point we're going to be able to take a look at that problem that isn't necessarily part of the proffer, and that was the reason that I kind of brought that up. Any comments, discussions, Mr. Haldeman?
Speaking of cumulative impact, there are also developments, residential developments in the works, as you know, along Richmond Road, and we also have LDR and mixed-use designations right around Anderson's Corner that are no immediate plans to my knowledge, but you add this all up, and I don't know if there's enough asphalt in the world to cover all this, but... So, I'm glad you brought it up.
Unless there's any other questions for the staff or for us or discussion, I'd like to have a motion to approve these two items.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Weisong. Our next item is for the public hearing, and our first item is SUP 23-0014-7649 Cypress Drive Rental of Rooms. Mr. Lobacher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. Ms. Sharon Elliott has applied for a special use permit to allow for a short-term rental of one bedroom within the existing three-bedroom, single-family home at 7649 Cypress Drive. The property is zoned A1, general agriculture, is designated rural lands on the Comprehensive Plan land use map, and is located outside of the primary service area. The property is served by private well and septic. If granted, this SUP would allow for short-term rentals throughout the year, and there are no changes to the footprint of the home that are proposed. Staff finds some favorable factors for this application, such as there being adequate off-street parking, and the applicant has stated they will obtain the proper licensing and inspections prior to operation. Staff also finds that the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding property or development, nor is it expected to negatively impact levels of service for roads and other public services. While staff believes the location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds that this proposal is not fully consistent with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Plan recommendations for short-term rentals. Therefore, staff is unable to recommend approval of this application. Should the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application, staff has also included proposed conditions for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Questions for staff?
What are they not fulfilling more specifically?
The current... The criteria that aren't being fulfilled is that this parcel is located internal to a subdivision, and it's not located along a major road.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I will open the public hearing, and I have one speaker card. Ms. Elliott?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, and Mr. Holt. My name is Sharon Elliott, 7649 Cypress Drive in Lenexa. I'm the applicant for a special use permit to operate a short terminal of a space in my home where I reside. I did not purchase this home as a financial venture. The property's been in my husband's family for over 30 years. My husband and I have lived there for 13 of those years. My mother was 90 years old, legally blind, in the beginning stages of dementia. She could no longer safely take a taxi to her medical appointments and the grocery store, and she needed assistance with everyday chores. I was struggling to help her while trying to hold down a full-time job, so we discussed the situation, and I told her she had two options. She could move to an assisted living facility of her choice, or Option B, she could move in with me. Well, she chose Option C. She wanted to stay in her home where she had resided for 60 years in Hampton. I wanted to abide by her wishes and ensure that her remaining years were spent where she was the happiest, so I decided to retire early in order to spend more time assisting her. I knew that retiring early would be a financial hardship, but I thought I could probably get a part-time job to fill the income gap and allow me to pay my monthly mortgage. Unfortunately, it's difficult to find any employment that's flexible enough to allow me to drive to her home in Hampton at a moment's notice because her insulin pill pen isn't working, or she needs something from the grocery store so she can bake a cake to take to church. I didn't decide to operate this short-term rental originally as just a financial venture, but I ended up having to because of the flexibility and my financial need. I was unaware that I needed a SUP, so from May of 2022 through November 22, I began renting out this space in my home that had previously been occupied by my son before he got married. It consisted of one bedroom, one bathroom, and a sitting dining kitchenette area. There is a lockout door between this area and the rest of my home. I had already spoken with my adjacent neighbors and my neighbor across the street, and they had no issues with my short-term rental plan. I have written letters from them stating their support. My neighbors told me that seldom did they even know that I had guests, and they agreed to bring any issues to my attention. There were none. It is very important to me that my guests are respectful of my home, my neighbors, and my community. I have cameras outside in case I need to review a problem. I've never needed to use that. I carefully screen potential guests and only accept reservations for those with good reviews from other hosts. Guests must agree in writing to my house rules before or while I will accept their reservation request. Some of my rules are: They must meet with me in person for a walk-through of the rental area. There are no parties, no pets, no guests. Quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. There's a limit of one vehicle that must be parked in the designated spot in my driveway. All of my guests have been outstanding. I enjoyed getting to know them and recommending two drummers for dinner, honey butters for breakfast, and trying to explain them the difference between Jamestown Settlement and historic Jamestown. I earned super host status several times. In December of 2022, I received a letter from the zoning administrator stating I was in violation of a zoning ordinance. I took this very seriously, and I emailed Ms. Hippel promptly, who directed me to contact planning. I applied for the special use permit, and the reviewing agencies generally had no issues. Those were Stormwater Resource Protection Division, zoning, the Fire Marshal's Office. Virginia Department of Health required some reports from a professional engineer regarding our alternative onsite sewage system. We finally got these taken care of, and they have no issue with us renting out this space. Consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, I will always reside on the property during a rental so that I might promptly respond to any requests or concerns from my guests. Also consistent with the 2045 Plan, I reside in an area designated as rural. Not consistent with the 24 Plan, 2045 Plan, I do not reside on a major road. However, I believe that that's minimal impact on the traffic in the neighborhood. I would like to thank Mr. Ben Lowpecker in planning for his great attitude and his patience in guiding me through this process. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I have one question. Out of the... When you were renting it, what percentage of the year could you estimate was it...
You know, I only rented it from May through November, and that would probably continue. I think I'd probably get some sporadic rentals during the winter, and I tried to only rent it one time per week. Most of the time, it was three-to-four day weekends. It wasn't like back-to-back-to-back, I blocked off days because I'm the one that cleans it and everything, and I mean, I need some extra income, but I don't want it just every single day.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Do we have any other speaker cards? No? Is there anybody else willing or wanting to speak on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public comment period and open the floor up for Commission's discussions or comments or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we approve Permit 23-0014-7649 Cypress Drive Rental of Rooms.
With the conditions?
With conditions.
I just make one comment. This is... Sort of brings up the continuous... The continuing struggle we have with short-term rentals, and this one is particularly interesting to me because the reason cited by the applicant to provide... She took an early retirement for an ailing parent, and this is additional income, and this reason was exactly the reason that was cited at the Board of Supervisor, the July ... Or the June 12th Board of Supervisor meeting for one of the short-term rental cases that we considered in May, and the board approved it because of the financial impact, and so I'm going to support it. And as far as the traffic goes, one bedroom would produce the same amount of traffic as when her... The son was living there, I'm assuming, so there's no traffic addition to the road, and I drove down there and looked at the property. So, anyway, I just wanted to draw the connection between one that was just recently approved by the board and the reasoning given in this particular application.
Well, I agree with you, and when we spoke to the board on the issue itself on that, I made the point about the economic component of this thing for it. So, I was really happy to see that, in fact, they approved it for that reason for it. I think the other piece that impressed me is the three letters that we got in from the neighbors, and so, and given her track record for the operation and the support that she has... she has from the neighbor, that means a lot, at least to me. I intend to support it. Having said that, are there any other comments that anybody else has?
I would just offer that, you know, one of the, one of the letters says, "I do not give my consent to all short-term rentals in the neighborhood." So again, my struggle with these is that here we have an opportunity of somebody with an accessory apartment which could be rented out full-time to somebody, and we're removing some affordable housing stock from our, from our supply here in the county. So I don't intend to support this application, given that it doesn't comply with our comprehensive plan.
Any other discussion, comments?
I wasn't going to say anything on this. I intend to support it, but our last meeting, we recommended denial on two short-term rentals, and the Board of Supervisors, we voted four to two against, and the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to approve them. And I was struck by the discussion, the discussion of the board members was almost identical to the discussion of the planning commission. They just came up with a different decision, which is fine. I didn't feel that strongly about it, but we really don't have a policy here. It's, it's changes from application to application, and I don't have a solution for that. That was just an observation.
I don't think we've got any guidance in the discussion that we had outside that we don't know what we don't know, and we're going to continue to muddle around, and this is just another example of the same issues that we've talked, you know, Tim has been very consistent about the affordable housing issue for that, and now we have another twist on it. And so, you know, Mr. Holt, I really don't know where we go from here outside of continuing to muddle along, but, you know, if there is some other idea of what other communities are doing that are starting to come involved with it that may warrant another look at the policy again, I'd appreciate your thoughts on that at some other point.
Yeah, we can certainly.
Any other comments or discussions on the item? If not, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
O.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Our next item on our agenda is SUP twenty-three dash zero-zero-one, Stonehouse Water and Sewer Improvements. Mr. Weisong, you're back again.
Evening again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the commission. Mr. Jeff Hunnellman of Land Planning Solutions has applied on behalf of the property owner for a special use permit to extend an off-site water main and sewer forced main north from Rochambeau Drive, traversing beneath Interstate sixty-four and west along Mount Laurel Road to serve the Stonehouse Development. The subject parcels are addressed three-eight-two-zero Rochambeau Drive and one-seven-zero Sandhill Road, account for approximately ninety-point-four-six acres, and are zoned for planned unit development commercial. The majority of the subject parcels and the portion of the SUP that's being applied for is located inside the primary service area and is designated low-density residential, while a minority of this acreage is designated rural lands on the twenty-four-five comprehensive plan and is located outside the primary service area. Staff has included an SUP condition prohibiting connections from these proposed mains to any property located outside the PSA. Section fifteen-point-two dash two-two-three-two of the Code of Virginia states in part that no public facility be allowed unless the planning commission finds the location of the facility substantially is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. As previously stated, the proposed location of the water main and forced main is located inside the PSA with proposed conditions that restrict expansion of these facilities into the portion of the parcel designated for rural lands. Staff finds that with this condition, this proposal is compatible with surrounding development and is consistent with the twenty-four-five comprehensive plan as well as the zoning ordinance, and will not have negative impacts on surrounding properties. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. Staff also finds this proposal consistent with Virginia State Code and recommends the planning commission find this application consistent, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Just curiosity, how are they getting across sixty-four? Maybe there's a tunnel or something?
I think they say they're going to do a Jack and Boar, but more to come on that in the future. I'm sure that's quite a process they have to go through.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, and let me open up the public comment period. Anything from the applicant or anybody else? Sir?
Um, the applicant.
Would you like to make a comment?
Not unless you have a question.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, and just as a reminder, we will need two motions for this. One is for consistency to the comp plan and then a motion for the SUP. So for discussion, any comments or a motion?
I have one question for, for Mr. Holt. In the last comp plan, when we were considering the PSA, and we were talking about the parcels on the other side of sixty-four up Croker Road, in one of our discussions, we talked about the inability to take water and sewer under sixty-four. Do you recall that?
Yeah, and not to, not to pick apart the words too much. It's not that there was an inability, it's that it's not currently there. And so any development application on that big piece of land, there are proffers on there that do say any development on that needs to hook up to public water and sewer. I think it was just really more of a recognition that it's not there now, certainly not anything that the James City Service Authority is going to be installing, that would just be a, a cost of whatever master plan, whatever development came. So, you know, certainly not that it's not physically possible, it's just, you know, as you can imagine, it's cost and permitting and time, so.
No, I just was, couldn't remember the conversation, so thank you.
Any other comments or discussions or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval for SUP twenty-three dash zero-zero-one-one, Stonehouse Water and Sewer Improvements with conditions.
We need to do the consistency one first, if we could.
Pardon. I move that the stone water, I move that we recommend that the Stonehouse Water and Sewer Improvements are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. Polster?
Aye.
And now, Mr. Haldeman.
As before, I recommend, excuse me, I move that we recommend approval for SUP twenty-three dash zero-zero-one-one, Stonehouse Water and Sewer Improvements with conditions.
Any motion?
Croft?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to planning commission considerations, we do have an agenda item, Powhatan Creek Watershed Management Plan update. Ms. Small, are you going to speak to her, or Mr. Wilson?
You are.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Stormwater Resource Protection Division's been working with other county staff to update the Powhatan Creek Watershed Management Plan, which is the oldest plan dating back to two thousand and one. We've been working with our consultant, Stantec, and we have Daniel Proctor here from Stantec tonight to give you an update on the progress to date, and we'd be happy to answer any questions after the presentation.
State your name and address, please.
Yes, it's Daniel Proctor. I'm with Stantec. My home address is four-six-four-four Yardley Loop in Willsburg.
Thank you.
We have a few slides to be able to walk through the status of the watershed management plan, as well as some of the topics that could potentially be of greatest interest to the commission. First is an overview. This is one of three watershed plans that are currently being either updated or a new watershed plan being developed. This is Powhatan Creek we're specifically speaking to tonight, but Yarmouth Creek and Diasken Creek are also in development. Right now, the Powhatan Creek Plan is scheduled to be completed and adopted by September of this year, whereas Yarmouth and Diasken would be following around the end of the year in early twenty-twenty-four. So far, as part of the watershed plan update for Powhatan, we've completed both desktop-level assessment of different studies and conditions related to water quality and water quantity issues, as well as field assessments on stream habitat conditions and stormwater systems throughout the watershed. We've also engaged in a number of public input points along the way. The draft plan has already been provided to county staff for review. Revisions have been made and posted for public comment now. I mentioned the public engagement. We started with a public survey that has since been closed to get input on the watershed goals, as well as issues throughout the watershed. We have a mapping tool that's online on the project website where the public can provide input on ideas or issues, and that is still active. And then we also have an email list that we've provided announcements to key, our public hearings and key. We've all had two public meetings for input on the assessment and findings, as well as recommendations. And then, as I mentioned, a thirty-day public comment period has just opened. That'll run from July one through July thirty-first. That is on the project website as well. We've also had some targeted stakeholder feedback from various groups, both inside and outside of the county, related to the watershed activities. This plan is a comprehensive look at a lot of different issues affecting watershed health. We've kind of broken out some of those different items into, in three groupings here. One is a review of past information from the older plan, water quality studies and monitoring data that are available either from past James City County studies or from other external parties like DEQ or HRSD. We had the field level reconnaissance that I mentioned earlier, as well as the desktop-level analyses, and the desktop-level review included conservation areas, impervious cover trends over time, modeling using the watershed treatment model, looking at different pollutant loadings, as well as existing and future flood risk review. These three items, we felt like might be of greatest interest. We have some additional slides on some of the findings within each of these three, but again, happy to talk about others or provide follow-up information later if needed. For the conservation area review, this started with an update to the original watershed plan and the conservation area review at that time. This map shows forty-four areas that were considered back with the two thousand and one plan, and specifically seventeen of those were identified as priority conservation areas at that time. We went through an update of those seventeen areas, looking at the same prioritization factors that was used originally, as well as layering in some additional considerations from the county's natural and cultural assets plan and how that may affect prioritization. And then we provided updated tables and recommendations for those seventeen areas. Seven of those have limited potential for further action, whereas the other ten have updated rankings as far as the prioritization factors. Next was the impervious cover study. Was using the impervious cover model from the Center for Watershed Protection that was used with the original plan, as well as updates that the county had made back in, I think it was two thousand and eight. And we've looked at the trends from the original two thousand and one to two thousand and eight to today, and seeing how just the increase of impervious cover could be translated into concerns for watershed health. I did want to point out that the impervious cover model for many years was one of the few kind of generalized recommendations of this type, and it has a lot of good use to track watershed health, but there are some limitations as well. Looking at the long-term trends, you can see with these maps from two thousand to two thousand and eight at the top, and then current conditions from twenty-twenty-two down at the bottom left, and as well as future full build-out conditions in looking at the comp plan, as well as any planned communities, and what a full build-out of the watershed might look like. In two thousand, all the green areas were identified as sensitive, and there were six in the yellow, six subwatersheds identified as impacted based on increased imperviousness. In two thousand and eight, the number of, of the impacted subwatersheds increased from six to eight, and that trend is, as you see in twenty-twenty-two, has continued where all subwatersheds were considered impacted or non-supporting now, which is in red, and two subwatersheds, based on the increased imperviousness, hit the non-supporting category. And then last, if you carried out the future full build-out projections, an additional two subwatersheds would fall into that non-supporting category. The largest concentration of that future development from now to the future full build-out scenario would be the completion of Newtown, as well as the properties with the Eastern State Hospital redevelopment potential. Next was the flood risk review. We looked at both existing floodplain conditions from the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain model that the county used with the letter of map revision a number of years ago, and we compared the, using that mapping, we looked at areas of critical infrastructure that could be within the floodplain, as well as number of homes and road crossings that could get cut off based on flood conditions and isolate portions of the community. The numbers I've shown here are just the results of that existing flood risk review. So there were four pump stations located in the current floodplain, about two hundred and ninety-two buildings, based on the GIS database, and then there were a number of areas that could potentially get isolated based on roadway flooding, both in and out of those areas, that it could get cut off from emergency access or evacuations, and that includes a number of communities got listed here. We've also compared that to future conditions. I skipped ahead a little bit. The future conditions accounted for both sea level rise projections, with two different scenarios, a one-and-a-half-foot of sea level rise, as well as a three-foot of sea level rise, based on HRPDC recommendations for planning purposes. And then we've also looked at an increased rainfall amount, using some of the NOAA guidance on increased rainfall, about twenty percent, and updated the models from the FEMA model to see how the increased floodplain boundaries could affect other areas. In summary, there were another four critical infrastructure facilities that are not currently in the FEMA floodplain, but may be in a future increased floodplain scenario based on what we looked at. Two of those are JCSA pump stations, and two are HRSD pump stations. There were an additional one hundred and thirty-six buildings that aren't currently in the floodplain, but that may become in the future floodplain based on these projections, and then a number of additional communities that could get isolated. We've shown here in red just a couple points of note as an example of some of the future flood mapping, and the areas circled in red, that includes Jamestown High School and some of the neighborhoods off of Route Five, would be a large area that could be isolated under the future increases. off of Route Five, would be a large area that could be isolated under the future increases. And all the homes shown with blue dots are buildings that aren't currently in the floodplain, but may be in the future. And the red are the locations in the critical infrastructure facilities. Other example, farther north in the watershed, near Lafayette High School in the Seasons Trace neighborhood, a large portion of that neighborhood could get cut off based on the projections modeled. And then off to the right is down in Necco Land and the low-lying area that's more susceptible to tidal flooding and the effects of sea level rise down there, affecting Powhatan shores and a larger number of homes in that area, aren't currently in the FEMA regulated. Definitely can't read all of this, it's a lot of words, but I did want to share the eight goals that were identified for the plan. These were based off of the original watershed goals and the feedback we got from the public during the public engagement. In general, one would be addressing water quality issues, two habitat value and conservation, three is refining the stormwater requirements to better improve on existing conditions, not just future alone. Four was continuing to track and prioritize existing maintenance of stormwater features. Five was promoting additional watershed awareness with the public and stewardship amongst the residents. Six would be restoring degraded streams and protecting high-value streams and wetlands. Seven was identifying future flood risks and laying out a path to plan for that in the future. And eight, preserve and improve public access and recreation. Based on those goals and the findings from the different assessments, the plan has a number of recommendations included. There were five different types of recommendations, and the report has them grouped accordingly. One would be the stormwater treatment practices, and so these would be discrete improvements like stream restoration, retrofitting of existing stormwater practices, and bringing them up to current standards or more improved conditions, and then also looking for opportunities for new stormwater practices. Programmatic recommendations were also included. That's looking at programs that the county already has, like the Clean Water Heritage Program and Septic Safe and whatnot, and identifying opportunities to improve on those programs based on the specific issues within the watershed. That would also include the conservation area planning and what programmatic activities. Third would be regulatory and enforcement recommendations. Those would include any potential stormwater regulation changes and ordinance changes, expanding on and refining the special stormwater criteria program, or potentially putting more focus towards illicit discharge detection and elimination. Fourth was floodplain management recommendations of identifying, based on this initial look at flood risk, additional studies or refinements that may be needed to better understand the issues, or in some of the areas of greatest concern, potential improvements that could be explored to help offset the effects of flooding. And then last, education and awareness of opportunities for more outreach, more education of the residents, that the county is already doing a lot of, but how that might be refined or improved on. Next steps with the plan, as I mentioned, it's out for public comment now, and we're going to be taking a look at those comments and revising them with the county staff in August, with the hope to have a final plan published and adopted in September. There's a link here to the project website where you can see the plan and where the public comments can be entered. Definitely happy to take questions now, or follow up with additional questions kind of outside of the commission.
Any questions for the staff or for the individual here?
I have a couple, thank you. First of all, recommendation, this is a pet peeve of mine, actually, but if you could number your slides, it'd be easy to refer to them that way, but I have a question on slide number ten. I know it's slide number ten because I just counted them. It's the long-term trends.
Will you be able to help pull that up? It's hard for me to navigate up here, going back.
Mouse wheels should help it.
There you go. There it is. That's pretty grim reading. We're already at 2022, and full build-out, whenever that is, twenty more years, I guess. We're going to have what looks to me to be roughly forty percent of the landmass is non-supporting, streams that won't support any life at all. You accept that? Is this a done deal? Or, I know goal number one is to improve water quality, satisfy TMDLs. Looks like you've got a big job to do, based on this map. Do, to meet the TMDLs in this watershed, is there a timeline for that? Is there a, you have a goal here, but you don't have when, and I assume there's a, the TMDLs are a numerical goal, so you have that established because you're going to satisfy TMDLs. When do you expect that to happen? It looks like not only do we have to stop the momentum from going forward, we have to retract it, we have to back up to, at worst, where we were in 2000. Have a plan in place for that? With a timeline?
It's definitely a challenge, as you've acknowledged, and the watershed plan is attempting to help with exactly that. So we've been able to use this as one data point amongst the other assessment data points to help prioritize where opportunities for improvements could be located in those areas needing it the most. So for these areas that are non-supporting, we've also looked at the streams to see if the health of the streams truly correspond with what the ICM would predict, and then trying to concentrate of future recommendations in those areas because of that. I do also want to back up one slide. One thing that's not captured with the ICM projections is it's really good at showing trends with watershed health when there's very little stormwater management in place. But over time, in particular from the 2008 and 2022 increase in development, both county and statewide stormwater criteria were in place, whereas prior to 2000, there were much more limited stormwater requirements.
It looks like whatever was in place from 2008 to 2022 didn't work very well.
I think that's what I'm trying to point out, is the ICM doesn't account for the stormwater management practices. It purely looks at impervious cover and assuming that means it translates to poor health.
To where it says non-supporting, it's, that's not an actual measurement, that's an assumption based on the ICM.
Right, that's an assumption of the ICM. So that's why we wanted to look at the other data points and compare, because future development's going to have even more stormwater requirements than development back in 2008. So these areas like Newtown and others that are within these areas have a much higher stormwater standards than some of the older development elsewhere in the watershed. So that's not reflected in this map alone.
So do we have a goal based on actual pollution measurements in these streams? Not just a model, but actual pollution management?
There's very limited monitoring data. We have looked at the monitoring data, and then we looked at the current conditions on the stream health as a data point as well. We walked, I think it was over forty miles of streams to see what they look like. So all of that is included in the report findings.
So bring up the Newtown water monitoring data, and tell me what that says.
We have a couple extra slides that show some of that. The water quality monitoring in Newtown is shown here.
And what does it say?
It's shown that out of the four water quality stations after Newtown's development, three of them stayed pretty steady with water quality conditions. One did show a decline, but within the interior of that, which we feel like might have been a case of a...
So your assessment for 2022, the current conditions for Newtown is non-supportable, and your data says what?
The data for the monitoring shows that it's in that suboptimal range, if you look at the water quality conditions, but not trending downwards after...
It's a verification that the impervious service cover for the Newtown is impacting the water quality, and you have the monitoring data to show it. And you don't have a, what, mitigation strategy for the new development yet to come in Newtown? And so it gets to his question, how do you mitigate that development when you're already poisoning the damn thing, and your data shows it here? And we're going to do what, build more? So the other question is, you did a downstream walking of the terrain there. What did you find for the conditions of the stream bed coming out of Eastern State into Chisel Run, into the Long Hell Swamp, and into the Powhatan at that area? What was the stream conditions?
Pull that up as well, if you'd like. So the map, over to the right, Subwatersheds 208 includes Newtown. The stream on the very top of that subwatershed is all in red. That reach was identified as poor, stream habitat, the lowest score from the stream habitat assessment. So the channels extending out into Newtown were not as bad, the yellow...
Marginal or suboptimal, based on your graphic?
Right, marginal, suboptimal, and then poor further down downstream.
So we are in 2022. We know the stream conditions are already suboptimal, with more impervious service to come, which is going to aggravate. Plus, you know what the water quality is already in Newtown. And so I'm back to the question that he was asking you, is how do you mitigate those current conditions, realizing, you know, the limitations of the ICM? But your data shows that we're already suboptimal, based on the impervious service. So how do you mitigate that, except to spend more money on stream restorations?
Is it, I'm sorry, is it based on impervious cover, or, I mean, it's just an equation? All we're saying is...
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, it's the amount of water that's coming off and going into the watershed, and it's the volume of that water that is washing it out, taking the bentic animals out of the thing, as well as eroding and sediment in there. So there is a direct relationship between the amount of water that's coming off those impervious surfaces and the impact on these streams. That's what you're saying.
This doesn't take into account stormwater practices.
It certainly does. We have stormwater practices, no, in Newtown, no, no, in Newtown specifically, I asked. And you have the best stormwater facilities that ever were ever built. They're the top of the line, and you can see the impact, not only in the water quality monitoring data. So let us not get there, because I think the real question that Jack is bringing up, and it's one that we went through in the 2045 comp plan, which was if you have a cumulative impact for traffic, and you have a cumulative impact to the finances of the county in terms of growth, you also, as I tried to show out, is you have an impact on the environment that's cumulative. And so what we're seeing is the cumulative impact on the environment. So the question is, is how do you mitigate it? Because we're not going to stop growth, but how are you going to mitigate that development when you're already aggravating a current situation? So my question to the staff that I raised before is what are the policy issues that we should be looking for in the future? And so to your point that it's not the only thing, the one piece that we do have that I raised during the comp plan and was told, no, no, the stormwater criteria that we have takes care of it, this study has proven that it's not adequate. And so if you want to talk about what you're thinking about for policy changes to the SSC?
What I would like to say is just that this is why we're here today, bringing an updated plan to the county. The plan that we had needed to be updated, growth has happened. The special stormwater criteria that were identified in the 2001 plan were not addressed throughout the entire Powhatan Creek watershed. So one of the proposals is for the SSC to apply to the entire watershed, which will make an immediate difference. In addition, like Daniel said, with the programmatic changes, regulatory proposals, so we're trying to pull all that together, but what we're bringing for you today is the draft plan for public comment, so that we can move forward on trying to make sure that new development doesn't negatively impact the watershed any further, and to try and find ways to go back and address things that happened with old stormwater management and no stormwater management, pre-stormwater management in the county.
So my concern is that you are going to relook at the SSC that's dated in 214, to look at the entire watershed. And when do you intend to probably have that in front of us so that we could take a look at it? And the reason I ask it is a trick question, is we're going to see, probably within the next year, applications, and we already have, what is it called, West Park?
It's parcel C of Newtown.
Yeah, already is being proposed for it, and then we're going to see the other portion of that, too. And so I don't want to be looking at one portion of the Eastern State and not looking at the cumulative impact of the total thing based on what we're seeing here. And if there is going to be a decision on it, then there ought to be a policy of an updated set of standards to the SSC that could be applied to it that would mitigate it. And I think there's some other mitigation strategies that you're also thinking about. And so what I'm hoping for is that we have, in a timely way, policies that could be in place and approved by the board to mitigate what we know is going to be a disaster in the future, by not taking any steps. Now, the other thing that I wanted to talk about with this floodplain update is, you may recall my comments about sea level rise and flooding. And they've done that not only for this, but for the Yarmouth, and they'll do it for that, and you can see what the impact is. So my question is, is, and I'm not asking for specific numbers, most of our JCSA piping runs through the RPAs in the lowlands of the Powhatan Creek. You already have seen the pump stations that are going to be impacted with the increased rain on that. What are you seeing in terms of the impact on that piping between those places?
Can I answer the SSC question first?
Okay.
So an answer to your SSC question, because we have the three watershed plans coming one after the other, as you know, presented on a previous slide, what we'd like to do is wait for all three, and then in the spring of 2024, which is not that far from now, do an overhaul of the SSC as one document, as opposed to updating it three times as each plan gets completed. So that was kind of our anticipated schedule for that.
But if you got the West Park and the other Eastern State in, you'd use your 214 standards against it, wouldn't you? Which we already know are inadequate, based on what we have for the data. So all I'm trying to get to is that we're going to be asked to make a decision without the policy in place and with a criteria that we have, that the county is allowed... and with a criteria that we have that the county is allowed to do by ordinance. That's out of date. And, and I, I just have a problem with that. Okay? And, and it's not yours and I understand that, Tony. It's not a personal thing. Paul?
Well, I, I was really just going to add, so whether or not the specific new policies to implement these updated watershed management plans are adopted or not. If you will recall, staff had received some earlier direction by the board to go ahead and specifically, in anticipation of some of these applications moving forward for legislative consideration, had asked staff and then also the consultant to go ahead and prioritize analyses of these subwatersheds so that information really at this level could be passed on to the applicants uh, for consideration as they prepare those documents. And so really since that, that first directive from the board to go ahead and prioritize these, sort of speed up this part of the process, if you will, so that this information, again, while it may not be adopted, can be made available at the time such legislative applications are considered. And then the applicant in their, uh, submittal can address what parts of these are addressed or maybe not, um, with some good direction we got at the beginning. And so staff has, uh, passed that along to these applicants, uh, and, and these teams. And so, you know, again, we've, we have one that's been submitted that's recently, that's in its first review. Um, the other large one has not been submitted yet, but you know, again, all of this information is being shared back with the applicant teams for this.
Okay. So that's the SSC. So the second thing was the flooding, uh, and the JCSA. So what were your findings there?
We, we had a meeting with JCSA to discuss some of the, those same concerns. And they provided some information that they have waterproofed a lot of the manholes, uh, within the low lying areas. And we've included some follow-up recommendations to go back and re-inspect some of those. Uh, because it's been a, a number of years now that they've done that waterproofing to see if there's, it's still holding up like it should. Um, as well as get better mapping in other areas on the full extent so that waterproofing.
So my point on, on this is there are policy decisions that we are going to be seeing that are associated with this. Whether it's a JCSA piece and a, and a rate increase to be able to fix things or the consent orders that they already have in place to be able to take care of the outflow. These conditions are going to drive costs. If you take a look at their study for the Jamestown area, uh, and the high school pieces there, you're going to see a closing of road. And, and should it surprise anybody that sixteen oh seven, which in two oh eight hurricane with Mary Jones, which is why she started the whole spec, that it's there again? Or any of the other places in the landfill? And so I've asked about this question with this thing is do you have the VDOT guys put another bridge across that or not? Or do you use that as a dam because of the sea level rise coming up? As well as the stormwater coming down? So what are the policy decisions associated with that? We're going to see the same thing in the Yarmouth at Chickahominy Haven that I pointed out before. And so right now we have a free board of two feet. And those homes are all going to be underwater. So that two feet free board for the insurance piece isn't going to apply over the next twenty years. And so from a policy decision, do you change the free board in certain areas based on what we're seeing? So I, I mean, seasons trace. If you've ever been through that, that road gets closed off on that. How do you do the emergency management? And what are the adjustments that you make to that for your emergency planning based on the data we're starting to see? So there's a bunch of things that come out of this thing that provide the facts and what the projections are, which is what I was trying to get to in the 2045 plan. You need to plan over the thirty-year period to be able to put the dollars aside based on what we're seeing in the same way that it takes time to do the policy pieces. As well as the upgrade of BMPs that we know are contributing to part of this problem. So I'm not trying to get a silver bullet on one thing, but I, I do recognize the fact that there are policy decisions that have implications across the board that we have documented in the goals, strategies and actions of the comp plan, both in the public facilities and the environmental sections. And so I'm just asking us to look at probably moving some of these forward to at least to recognize that it's going to be a financial cost. Anyhow, uh, I'm off my soapbox.
Well, no, no, because you bring up a, you bring up an interesting point because now we're, now we're in a tug of war with our comp plan that says we want, we want, um, development and higher density inside the PSA. And then we're, if based on this modeling, it, it will, um, be detrimental.
I'm looking for the mitigation of the SSC that allows that to go forward. That's what I'm looking for because I'm not going to be able to stop it. Or I could look for a recommendation that says, I'd like a hundred-foot extension of the buffer for sea, which is what you've talked with them about. And there are other ways they can mitigate. They could take, they could from a proffer say, we'll take the responsibility for the stream restoration downstream for us as part of the proffer agreements. So there are other ways that this can be mitigated for it. But first you have to have the standard that says what's the impact? And then how do you mitigate that?
Right. But to your point about the cost, now we're making it, um, prohibitively expensive to develop. Especially if, if the stormwater takes another hundred feet and we've reduced the developable acreage based on removing RPA steep slopes and the like.
You're exactly right, but here's how it works. It's a balloon. So when you squeeze this way, it goes someplace else. And guess where that other place goes? Twelve million dollars worth of CIP in the current CIP budget for stream restoration based on what's happened here. And so when you take a look at that chart that they have there, you're going to see some red areas on the Powhatan Creek. And those will become candidates for CIP for them to submit. So the cost of that is either borne somewhat by the developer, but for sure it's going to end up in the taxpayers, which is what's happened.
Partially to, if I'm listening to this conversation correctly, a lot of this was existed before the current development, the current development standards. So, you know, so we're trying to say the downstream effects are blamed on the entire upstream development. And yet we're, at the same time, we're saying we have rigid stormwater pieces in place. So if, if post-development flow is supposed to be equal to or less than pre-development flow, you can't blame all the downstream effects on the development.
I agree.
But that's not what you're saying.
I, it's a combination of things, but it's going to cost somebody something at some point. And so how do you mitigate the problem at the root while you're still trying to fix the problem from past sins? I, I don't want it aggravated down on this side, which is what's happening. So I'm looking for a solution that says, hey, if you have a set of standards that you've been applied in two fourteen against development and you've recognized from this study that it needs to be updated, updated. Because over time we've seen that. I mean, it's not static. So you gotta evolve. You've got to iterate. Anyhow, once again, I guess I'm off my soapbox for a second time.
I have a, a couple of questions and and I'll briefly take your place on the soapbox. Uh, regarding the comment that we're, the comp plan wants us to increase development within the PSA. I, I've never bought that. Um, I, I think what it says is whatever development we're going to have should be within the PSA. But that level should be manageable. And based on this presentation, it's not manageable within the Powhatan watershed. Um, it, it just doesn't appear that way to me. One of my questions, uh, one of my other questions regarding the watershed goals, number two, maintain biological and habitat diversity and connectivity by protecting wildlife corridors and other vital areas of undeveloped land as identified within the conservation priorities of this plan. The county's natural and cultural assets plan and other relevant Virginia data sets. I don't see that here. I don't, if I, as I look at the maps of the Powhatan watershed, I, I don't see a connectivity plan, a cord, natural corridors. I, I just don't and, um, period, and.
I think if you look at the, the GIS data, you'll see, for example, that the Long Hill Swamp is a big corridor for wildlife going back and forth and it's all populated. And, and they've in fact, my question was going to be of the ten prioritized areas that you have here, what is it that we're going to do? Are we going to buy land or are we going to put it in the green space program? Or are we going to say to Tammy Rosario, here are ten areas that you may want to think about for recreational areas? What, what, what's the intent?
That's, that's an excellent question. And the, the, our, right now, the recommendations you'll see in the draft plan don't spell out those details of how to accomplish. It just provides information on here are the prioritized areas, uh, based on the factors. Um, and then recommendations on advancing through the current county, um, uh, programs and activities in that regards how to work through that list, uh, starting from the areas of most.
But to answer Mr. Haldeman's question on the connectivity, did you use the low, the low, the low-cost path from the, natural cultural heritage mapping piece? Is that how you got the connectivity?
Pete, let me pull up a summary table. So these are the ten prioritized areas. We used the same process that the two thousand plan had used to prioritize as far as the different types of factors, uh, for each. Uh, we did overlay that with the, the natural and cultural assets plan to try to find opportunities to align.
So the connectivity pieces from that plan are what you mapped here against these ten areas?
We've, we've mapped out the ten areas using the, the, the previous approach and then compared that to the recommendations from the natural and cultural assets plan to try to find the.
Did you use the GIS layer out of that for the connectivity layer?
We did use it, uh, these ten, we didn't create new areas, uh, but we tried to prioritize the previous ones. But we've included those new areas and, and some consideration of those new areas from the county GIS data in the plan as well, separate from this table itself.
Is it possible for wildlife to cross the Powhatan watershed from east to west or north to south? Completely cross it, um, through a natural habitat? Without, yeah, you know, going through people's backyards and, um.
There's areas that are really good and there is a, a large stretches, but then there's some areas where they get disrupted because of road crossings or, uh, previous development as well. So it's a mix.
If I, if I were to say there is no wildlife connectivity across the Powhatan Creek watershed, e- either widthwise or lengthwise, would that be an accurate statement?
I would say it's an accurate statement from, uh, if you're looking at it from a totality from one end to the other. Uh, but within the interior, there is good connectivity in, in, in areas.
But it's contained, it's.
So it gets disrupted if you look at it from start to finish.
There's, there's no migration routes? That was a question, I'm sorry. Are there any migration routes?
There are migration routes that are disrupted in a few spots and the natural and cultural assets plan had identified recommendations in, in, in where some of those disruptions are. Um, we tried to point back to that study, uh, to allow those recommendations to carry. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before the?
Me again, sorry. Number five, goal number five, that promote the watershed awareness and so forth. Do we, pardon me, I, this is, by the way, this outreach you've done, I think is great. So that's part of this promote awareness, I'm sure. But is there an ongoing plan now to promote awareness, um, of, of what we're doing and trying to do here? Do we have something like that in place?
There, we do have a number of recommendations included in the plan on that.
Thank you.
Just sort of a, a concern, uh, ba- based on the conversation that took place a little bit earlier as far as some of these large projects, uh, in the pipeline or getting ready to enter the pipeline, the eastern state and, and others. If SSC won't be updated until 2024 and we have some major, um, projects coming through. I know, Paul, you said that, well, that the, the applicants would be advised of the fact that there are some outdated or, or, um, inadequate, uh, uh, criteria in place. And the applicant would be asked to take that into consideration. But what happens when, uh, the applicant says, well, no, I'm just going to base it on, uh, what's in existence right here? And, um, everything else is just hypothetical right now. So does the county have a recourse other than to, to, you know, certainly we could, we could recommend an application not go forward for that reason. But I'm just thinking, you know, from a, a legal standpoint or, or what have you, what are some of the likely scenario? If, if an applicant, um, doesn't choose to take the, the ongoing project into consideration?
Sure. And so, you know, there are lots of factors that go into account when looking at legislative applications. You, you do have to do base that analysis based on the adopted plans that are in place. You know, but that is something that, um, say, for instance, you could, as a commission, pass along some of your comments and concerns, say, to the board, for example. But certainly your analysis of that would need to take place based on policies and procedures that are currently adopted.
I think Frank brought up a really good, um, point with, with his discussion on that. And so it's just something to keep in mind.
Other questions, discussions? Tony, thank you very much. Okay. So we are now on to, uh, the coverage for month of July. Mr. Haldeman, you have the honor. Are there any other considerations or requests? If not, we'll go to the planning director's report.
Very much, Mr. Chair members of the commission, nothing else this evening from my perspective. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
A question that's come up, occurred to me a couple of times with regard to, um, short-term rentals. And, you know, we've had dozens of them and no, I don't know dozens, but we've had a number of them in the last several years. And we've approved some and we've recommended denial on some and and, you know, some of, almost all of them, very few of them have met all four of our standards, our guidelines. Do we face the risk of some future application that comes in and we all agree it should be denied? But we've made so many exceptions along the way that based on precedent, we don't have standing to deny anymore?
Because every application is unique and every, every piece of property is unique.
Thank you. That's reassuring.
I will follow up on it, speaking of earlier comments. So we do have a number of intersection improvements, um, currently in design. And one of those includes the intersection.
Centerville.
That one's in designs as well as the one there in front of Schoolhouse Lane. If you'll recall for a while, I want to say for almost better part of a year, VDOT had run some test scenarios using temporary infrastructure. And, um, VDOT was very pleased with those results and had recommended that those be moved forward into design for permanent installation. So we're working through that engineering process as we speak.
So are we going to see a traffic circle there on Moretown Road and, and Airport Road? Is that what we're going to see?
On, for that particular, uh, intersection, yes, because that was a funded smart scale project. And, um, unfortunately, we won't see any additional pavement there until probably closer to 2030. But that one was an approved project.
That's great.
For construction.
So I, I mean, it's, it's an interesting dilemma, uh, when we talk about schools and intersections. Because, you know, and I guess my question is, are our construction standards appropriate for schools now? Because so many more people are driving and that's causing so much of, so many of the, the greater issues, whether it's Toino or Stone House or, or any of the, you know, I mean, even, even War Hill. You know, we've made a third of the parking lot. You know, we've made a third of the parking lot at War Hill unusable because that has become the entry road, um, to, to the school. So, uh, again, I, I don't know if we have a way to ask the school division to consider some of these, um, drivelanes when, when, uh, designing schools because, I mean, to get, to get to War Hill now is just, uh, I don't have to go anymore. My son graduated, but it was a mess this year for sure.
The schools credit, they are proactively trying and, and for some of these sites, they're having, as, as you know, trying to make some retroactive improvements. They are at least looking at those and putting, trying to put in some of those to increase the total lengths of queuing capacity to alleviate some of the backup and congestion that happens out on the primary roadways. And so, you know, you are starting to see some schools getting a little bit more securitous. Some schools where they're trying to, um, divide up the, the traffic coming into the school by, you know, by two or three different, uh, means instead of everybody coming in the way as a means to try to alleviate some of that backup. It's a difficult problem to solve because as you know, those queues happen for 20 minutes in the morning and, you know, maybe 30 minutes in the afternoon and then it's gone. Um, and that's going to happen for 10 months out of the year. So it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to, to crack for sure.
Mr. Holt, before you mentioned the airport road and Moretown Road, what was this road you said before that?
Uh, the other two intersections that are currently in design are the one there at Rochambeau and, um.
Old Stage.
Old Stage. That one has been looked at a lot.
Yeah, because people bring that up to me all the time.
That one just does not meet the warrants for a traffic signal there, but there are some improvements, uh, planned improvements there. And the other one is the intersection of Centerville, Route 5, and Green.
Thank you.
So what's the status of Centerville and Route 5?
Route 5.
That's the one I get all the time.
Same thing as, as the Old Stage one and Route 30. You know, for a while, VDOT had some test solutions in place that, at least from a traffic safety point of view, provided some favorable results. And so the, the design is, that's in place will mimic those, it just makes those temporary, uh, enhancements permanent improvements.
They align Centerville and Greensprings or is that?
I don't think so. I don't think geometrically it works. It's too sharp of a curve there behind Fieldcrest. Try to tie back in. Happens too quickly.
Other questions for Mr. Holt? If not, can I have a motion for adjournment to our two August 2023 meeting?
A move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.